Shalom, welcome to The Jewish View. My name is Rabbi Nachman Simon with the Chabad House of Dahmer, together with my co-host, Mark Ronachov, statewide news service, JaybizTechFilly.com, and now the columnist for the Jewish Press.
Right, I have a column called Albany Beat, and it's, I talk about how government relates to the Jewish community, or doesn't, as the case may be. So, we have a very, we have a repeat guest with us today.
You must like us over here.
Yeah, Frank Commisso.
Back again.
Frank Commisso Jr., and it's been a while since we've had you on the show, so welcome back. You're an Albany Common Council member.
Mark, Rabbi, thank you for having me.
What's new in Albany? That's what we can say, that's.
Well, you know, there's a lot going on in Albany. Of course, I'm one of 15 Common Council members, and we have a whole host of new council members that started serving in January of 2014, so, you know, I think we have a good group of people, diverse backgrounds, and clearly, I mean, we have a host of issues in Albany that we try to address. City finances, public safety, most recently.
Now, you're a numbers guy, and you chair the Finance Taxation Assessment Committee.
That's right.
So, how's the budget?
Talk about money, then.
Well, I think Albany and many other cities in New York State, I mean, they have really struggled in recent years. That said, Albany does have a handful of things working in its favor. You know, we are the seat of state government, so we do have rather stable employment. We have had some investment in Albany in recent years. However, it's largely been in the tax-exempt not-for-profit sectors, so that's, that's always been a challenge in the city of Albany. Most recently, I believe, we're 63% tax-exempt, so.
But there's ramifications for that also. Obviously, that brings in jobs. You know, I understand what you're saying, you can't tax them, but then it just, even like I'm seeing the convention center, which again is not, it's in Albany, but it must have transportation, people out, eat out for dinner, people have homes, you know, so it keeps the economy strong, maybe in certain sense. I know there's another side of the story, that's what I'm saying.
Right, and, you know, we'd like to see some sales tax numbers come back good in 2015 now. That's good for Albany County, it's good for all the 19 municipalities within Albany County, but the, but, you know, the tax-exempt issue is, has become really striking. When I first came on the Common Council, the city was about 57% tax-exempt by valuation. Most recently, we're up to 63% tax-exempt.
That's a big jump, with convention center, nanotech?
Well, I think part of that has been the struggles of the commercial sector as it relates to downtown. I mean, you go through downtown right now, and I know you both do, and I work downtown by day, downtown, I mean, you have a lot of for-rent, for-sale space-available signs. That's really depressed the commercial market downtown, and the city has lost some tax challenges in the past handful of years related to that, so.
Yeah, but it's interesting that I, when I hear about this, 60, 50%, 60%, I seem to remember in the 80s that it was like 85%. That's what Semenon Connors and way back when would bemoan or lament about, you know, about those, and Semenon McInnany who was after him, they would talk about about like 85%. Are they looking at different type, are they looking at the numbers differently?
Well, the 80s, forgive me, but as I go back to the 80s, I believe that had been a period where we had.
Before you were born.
A very long period without reassessment. In fact, the city really entered into the reassessment business in 1997, and that's where you really started to have of the neighborhoods, where you have taxable properties, small businesses, owner-occupied homes. That's where you had the first big lift in assessments out in the neighborhoods.
Well, then we're doing better than we did in the 80s.
Well, the optimist in you, and I'm optimistic too, for the reasons the rabbi said that. When you generate that type of activity, you have a more stable employment sector, that's something that we can, you know, as you compare Albany to some of the peer cities in upstate New York, Buffalo, Rochester, Syracuse, Utica, Yonkers, you look at Albany, and I think the stats bear out that we do have more stable employment. So that's a good thing for Albany and more broadly for Albany County and the capital region.
What happens when these churches close up and they are, they're banned? I know on, let's say, New Scotland Avenue, there was a whole bunch of, I don't remember the name of the church, but now it's over it, and there's a Robfeld Insurance, and there's other businesses now. So, those, those churches were taken off the tax roll, were off the tax roll, rather. Now it's, because there's a commercial business in there, it's back on the tax roll.
So, our assessor in the city of Albany does a great job, Keith McDonald. He's one of the top assessors in New York State.
Well, you have to say that, otherwise your assessment will go up.
No, in fact, you know, Keith is, I respect him both for his knowledge of assessment and the laws, rules, regulations related to assessment, but also his candor. But, as it relates to looking at the not-for-profits and commercial activity and not-for-profits throughout the city of Albany, I know that the assessor's office had conducted a review earlier last year, and they actually did identify some instances whereby there is taxable uses that now have been identified as taxable by the city, and that's a good thing. It was limited in nature, but there are those cases out there, as you suggest, where that happens. I do not specifically have any recollection of the New Scotland instance. But, there's some broader applications of this issue of the, what would be a taxable use inside an exempt entity that are of some great concern, I think, to the city of Albany. That being the development we've seen up on Fuller Road and Washington Avenue Extension, whereby you have a large level of state and public investment in a facility, and you're housing many for-profit entities there with their own shareholders, they have a profit motive, and in those cases, we'd like to see some recognition there from the state so that there's some reimbursement for Albany homeowners and small business owners. That's what would be a fair approach, and hopefully we'll get there with the large exempt entities. They'll start to realize that they have a stake in the city's financial future, and I think they do.
Yeah.
I would say as recently as 2013 and 2014, we've seen public acknowledgements from the educational entities, from religious entities.
Medical facilities.
From the hospitals.
I'm thinking of pilot, payments in lieu of taxes.
They're, they've shown a recognition, I would say, over the past 18 to 24 months that they do have a stake in Albany's future, and of course, there's a broader discussion there about what the magnitude of the compensation would be to the city, but that's a good thing for the city of Albany and its taxpayers.
But that's voluntary?
Voluntary in nature.
Because he's in the pilot program.
Voluntary in nature.
It's not, pilots is an acronym for payments in lieu of taxes.
Yeah, but I'm just saying payment, but that's voluntary, are they?
It is voluntary.
It's, it's voluntary because they have discussions before they build anything, and then when they want to build, like Albany Med, when they wanted to expand and knock down homes, and part of all that agreement to redevelop the Park South neighborhood, they, you know, they wanted the approval for it, so, you know, it kind of worked hand in hand.
And I wouldn't suggest, though, that it's necessarily just that. I mean, I think that it's also, there is a genuine recognition there on their end.
Okay.
And, you know, also, when the city is making some significant investments in those areas as well to accompany their private investments, or I should say their not-for-profit investments, you know, I, I, I think we've started moving in the right direction. Again, it's a broader discussion that will take time. Certainly, there's a bigger discussion as it relates to the properties off of Fuller Road and Washington Avenue Extension, but I think Albany Medical Center started moving in the right direction, and, you know, I'm confident that with time, St. Peter's, and perhaps some of the educational institutions will, will as well, they'll come on board and, and they'll realize that they have a stake in the city.
You also sit on the Operations and Ethics Committee, which is chaired by the Majority Leader of the Common Council?
President Pro Tem.
President Pro Tem. Oh, that's right, Herring is the Majority Leader.
That's correct.
Yeah, Rich Conti is the President Pro Tem. And, oh, well, I see Dan Herring's a member of the Operations and Ethics Committee, at least says it here, at least, maybe he's not anymore, or?
You got a good rapport, though, Mark, you got a good rapport over here.
How often does an Operations and Ethics Committee meet, or?
We had met in, I was on that committee last council as well, and we did have a meeting. That committee, I believe, handled redistricting when we had to come, you know, redistrict. We haven't met recently.
What, what are the types of issues that would be taken up? Because there's obviously no ethical issues in the Common Council.
Well, right now, government, certainly in New York State, I mean, government's been the, how should I say this most appropriately? I think, given what's happened recently in the Assembly and in the Senate, people, there's a loss of faith in government, right? And as recently as yesterday, we had local elections across the capital region, you have these abysmal turnouts where, in the city of Albany, 3% of the population is coming out to vote.
To school board, and, you know, to vote on school budgets.
Yeah, that's related to the school and library budgets, and you have some people at the Albany School District and with the Albany Public Library that do a great job, and we're here in the Albany Public Library, and in fact, I think their new director's doing some great work as well, and his staff. And then, of course, you have some new board members as of yesterday. But, I, I think when you see this apathy, and it's not exclusive to the school library elections, you also have this related to city, county, state. I believe the gubernatorial turnout was really low, so you do have some questions out there really of the, where the public has some questions about the ethical dealings of government, but, you know, I think on the Albany Common Council, the folks I sit next to and work with, I, I think they're dedicated people.
Yeah, a good bunch of guys, a good bunch of people, but I'm just saying, what, what type of measures, or however you.
What are the issues, the laws?
During this term that we've, now 17 months in, that committee has not met. Finance is an active committee, of course, because you're dealing with budget, you're dealing with capital budgets during two different parts of the year, and you have legislation that would go to finance during the course of the year. So finance is something that is inherently more active than, than Operations Ethics. But, you know, if we do have any legislation that comes across and a committee member asks to go, I'm sure President Pro Tem Conti would entertain a committee meeting.
And he certainly knows about the problems in the Assembly, because he works for Assemblyman Dick Gottfried, who we had on the show, and he's, he's Chief of Staff, I believe, Semenon Dick Gottfried.
Right.
So, he certainly knows what goes on in the Assembly and the ethical challenges in the Assembly, which you don't have to comment on, I'm not asking you to.
The Assembly's been a challenged institution over the past handful of years, and, you know, I don't mind commenting on that, that the Assembly's been a challenged institution. And, you know, I think the public widely has, has, you know, witnessed and has a loss of faith in the Assembly and Senate, and, and as I spoke to before, I mean, one of the crises that we'd have, I think, in government across the country is you have this erosion of democratic principles, people participating in the electoral process, but not just that explicit exercising of democratic values, or, but also, more broadly, I mean, you have a democracy that's failing. I think a lot of people have lost faith, not, not just because of public corruption. In fact, I don't even think most so because of public corruption, but I think there's, people have questions about how they make a difference. You know, as a council member, and I, you know, I don't mind saying it, I, in some cases, I question how effective our avenues are for people to participate in the government. I mean, we do have a public comment period, as you know, Mark, but, you know, if, if that is the extent of exercising democratic values and participating in democracy, that, that's not necessarily a great thing. We have a number of different committees, task forces, or entities, what you may, whatever you may call them, that meet, and there is an ability for the public to be involved in those processes, but in many cases, I think people feel that there's a predetermined outcome. So, I think we have to do better across the board at the local, state, and federal level, with the schools and libraries, that engaging the public and getting people to feel that they can make a difference.
You know, I didn't mean to segue into this, but in 2012, you ran for the State Assembly.
That's correct.
And you, at that point, even before any charges, you were saying Speaker Silver should not be reappointed as Speaker.
Well, there had been some challenges at that time, previously, that, you know, that had dated back many years. There had been some challenges to the institution, and, you know, I understand.
The Village Voice said you had cojones for saying that.
But I, but, you know, there is a lot of pressure on people to, you know, I think, support leadership in legislative institutions. There is a lot of pressure there built in, so it's hard for a change to necessarily occur until you had the more recent episode, and, and then you had a change take place.
But sort of like you had this premonition, like, I'm not supporting Sheldon Silver for Speaker, even before he had any sort of trouble.
Everyone.
I didn't remember until I went back and I looked at, you know, I looked, I Googled your name, and I looked up your.
Yeah, everyone, you know, has their own decision-making processes about how they look at things, and at that time, I felt comfortable saying it, but.
And now you feel more comfortable that you've been.
Well, sure, now I feel very comfortable saying it. It's easy now.
You also sit on the Parks Recreation and Family Services Committee, which is probably the most fun committee of the three that you're on.
Well, I mean.
Who doesn't like a park, or family, family services, or recreation?
Well, I do enjoy finance. I was at the State Comptroller's, now I'm at the County Comptroller's, so I'd gone from a larger pond to a smaller pond, but it was a very easy move. I went from 110 State Street to 112 State Street. But nonetheless, yeah, we, we have met a handful of times with the Parks and Recreation Committee as well, and, you know, it's something that I think we'd like to see ourselves make some improvements related to parks and recreation. But I will say, parks across the country have struggled as municipal budgets have really been strained.
Well, I would think the biggest issue with parks would be that, you know, the swing set, I mean, how, you know, the best swing set, I mean, you know.
Well, you gotta take care of the lawn. What would be the maintenance? What would be the, probably your major bulk of your, like you say, the budget where they have to be concerned with?
Well, you know, parks, I think, get strained at a local level, because naturally, a lot of resources end up dedicated towards public safety and infrastructure, but, you know, if we could do, if we had some wonderful windfall of cash locally, I mean, I think that there's some great things we could do with the parks.
Well, here's a slogan for your next campaign, is I play nicely in the sandbox.
Well, I will tell you something, though. You know, we've had statistics put in front of us before that show that public safety demand, the demands on public safety and the police force are, are great in the hours after school's let out from 3:00 to 7:00. So, you know, when you have good youth programming and recreation and parks in place, and if you can take a, a young man or an adolescent and have them playing a, could be a sport or some type of group activity in a park setting, and not only is it healthier for them individually, but it might be healthier for us as a community as well, so, you know, I think a lot of council members feel strongly about the parks and trying to find some additional resources there.
So, in October of 2014, you moved over from the State Comptroller to the County Comptroller's Office?
That's correct.
Okay, so, do you feel, what, first of all, tell your audience what you were doing for the State Comptroller and for the County Comptroller, it says you're overseeing local affairs of some sort.
Sure, so, with the State Comptroller, I had been with the State Audit Shop, the audit function at New York, with the New York State Comptroller's Office had broken into the state, and then there's a local function that handles the school districts as well. I had been on the state side, which was, I worked with some great people and still keep in contact with them, and, and that was certainly a great place to work, and I think the State Comptroller's done a great job.
Well, it's important to have that link. When, for your current job, it's important to have a link where you can actually pick up the phone and call someone that's known to you.
Well, I mean, and, you know, it's just a great professional workplace, and I think the State Comptroller's done a great job fostering that type of environment there. So, I certainly miss the folks over there. But now I'm working for the Albany County Comptroller, Michael Connors, and the most recent project that we're working on, we've really been working on since I came to the office, and it's coming to completion, actually, in another week and a half, is, is related to another program that New York State implemented in 2014, that has homeowners across the state receive credits or rebates from the state if, in fact, their local governments, school districts, special districts, stay under the cap, and also issue a plan for how they plan to stay under the cap going forward. So that's just been a great project. We have 28 participating entities in the plan. I think that, from the, the limited discussions we've had with the other counties in New York State, we have some of the most robust participation, three cities, nine towns, five villages, six library districts, including Albany Public Library, and they were great to work with. And also, we have four fire districts in Albany County, all in a joint plan, and we believe that both this year and next year, taxpayers will see some significant rebates, and I know they were a little smaller last year, but they will be larger this year, because now you will receive a rebate for school tax increase, city, county, library district increases, and for those folks in the suburbs, I know in Albany, we have a fire department that's part of city government, part of the city levy, they will also receive rebates. Some folks will receive sizable rebates. I, I don't totally believe that this was put together by the state in the best way, but we've managed with the law as it's written and it was passed. So, hopefully, in the future, I think there's some different ways that the state can achieve the important goal of property tax relief across the state, but we've, we've worked within the legislation, and I think, you know, we've put together a plan that those 28 entities can be proud of.
Wow. I've always been impressed with the way you've analyzed things and the way you've expressed yourself, so I gotta tell you that.
Thank you.
It's very refreshing. So, do you find, now, you made the move from the state to the county, it's all public information, it's all, but Rabbi knows, I always ask about this, did you get a pay raise? Did you, why did you move? What was the issue that, you know?
I received an increase when I moved over to the new job. It's, you know, but it's, it's a project, I will say, that is something that I was really interested in, right? Because having worked in City Hall now, it's my sixth year working on the Common Council, to go over and work with this type of project, where you can work with cities, towns, villages, fire districts, and library districts, something exciting to me, and I know that it's, you know, it's more of a quantitative exercise, but there are a lot of good people working in the local governments, and this was an opportunity that was really exciting, and I will say that working for the County Comptroller, Michael Connors, has been great as well. Michael's, you know, in addition to being a great chief fiscal officer for Albany County, he's, he's a great person to work for, and provides his staff a great deal of latitude to be creative, problem-solve on their own, and, and not micromanage their activities, but he really takes on that management focus over the office and, and working with some great people now in the county.
Right, so, when, now, he said he's going to run one more term. He announced his route for reelection for, what, a sixth, four-year term?
Yeah, he's running for reelection tonight, it's the Albany County Democratic Committee Meeting, and.
Yes, I will be there.
We'll see, there'll be nominations on the floor, seconds, and then, you know, any discussion on the nominations, but hopeful that Mike will be able to have the support of the committee tonight, which is, which is one step in the process, so there's still the whole.
Gotta get petitions, gotta get ballot signatures, you still have to go through the whole rigmarole, but he's got a, a system down. I mean, he's got his, his team.
Yeah, absolutely, so.
And, you know, he's been a loyal, him, you know, being brought up through the ranks with his father and grandfather, I mean, you know, it's, the Connors name is legendary since the late 1800s in this county.
Sure.
So, do you give any thought to advancing to a countywide seat?
Oh, no, I mean, right now.
And you're young, you can.
I'll tell you, right now, I'm happy on the City Council.
I know.
You know, I, I enjoy the work, I enjoy looking at the challenges facing local government.
You ran for the Assembly.
Sure.
And I just was wondering, when I looked at all this, and it was just as a friend, I just thought I'd ask you, I just didn't know, but.
I'll tell you, though, right now, I have an eight-month-old daughter.
Uh-huh.
That fully.
Well, congratulations, mazel tov on that, I didn't realize.
Thank you, thank you. That fully occupies any, any free time that I, that I may have, and it's a joy, it's a joy, it really is, so.
And how many children is that?
That's number one.
The first one.
Number one, and Gianna is.
Like I said, you're young, so you're gonna.
Yeah, she's, she's a great little girl, she's just starting to babble more and getting that crawling instinct, and she has two little teeth popping up, and it's a joy being able to see her at the end of the day.
Well, maybe she'll be at the public comment session one of these days.
She did attend one Common Council meeting so far.
Okay.
She was pretty good, but she had to have constant movement, so Brittany was walking her, pacing her back and forth outside the door, and I could see the baby moving, but it was cool, it was nice.
So, I know the comptroller gave something he calls the State of the Fisk.
Sure.
To the county lawmakers, so how was that? How are we doing?
Well, the county's made some improvements over the past handful of years.
He praised the nursing home.
Yeah, nursing home operating costs are down, and, you know, that, that was really, it, it took some time, but there was a balancing act to find there, and the legislature felt that, you know, they wanted to maintain a publicly-owned, publicly-operated facility, but they had to do it at a, at a reduced cost, and they've achieved that with, at least conservatively, I mean, we'll see as the numbers go on across this year, but conservatively, there's $5 or $6 million in savings from year over year related to the nursing home, and that's a great thing. And that took some sacrifice as well from the employees and the staff they have there. But additionally, you know, the county is doing well financially right now, better than the counterparts at the city, town, and village level, I would say. And, you know, that's really reflected, I think, most recently, I mean, the county's, you know, able to finance debt rather affordably, and, you know, that may be a product of global financial markets, more so necessarily, because all, all local governments and school districts have been able to borrow cheaply in the past handful of years. But, you know, the county's performing well right now on a number of levels, and we'll have to see how that goes in the future.
And the city is performing well. You must take pride being chairman of the, of the Budget Committee, as I call it, but you must take pride in that when, you know, you can get that through, and it ushered through in your committee and all that.
The city has some challenges right now, it does, I mean, I would say next year, the budget will be, I'll be eager to see what's there, but I, I think there'll be some folks disappointed, and the city just, it spends more money than it takes in, and significantly more. There's a significant gap there, and that gap persists year over year. So, this year, past, the current year we're in, during the past budget cycle, the mayor was able to fill that in with some revenues that can only be for one year, right? For sale of property, the red light camera revenue hasn't been realized yet, but when those lights are up, I mean, that will be a diminishing source of revenue over time, I would imagine.
Could people be more aware of?
Unless they move the cameras around, people are gonna know that they have the cameras.
Yeah, and, you know, the thought that this will be some sort of savior for the city, I, I just don't believe it. I mean, I think if the red light cameras make a, people aren't stupid, and if they make a significant amount of money, the red light cameras, that will be a product of the, the cameras turning predatory on the public, which, you know, was part of the reason I didn't support the red light cameras proposal, because, you know, simple internet searching on the matter shows that there's many other municipalities across the country that have been there, done this, tried that, and they've taken them down, and they've terminated their contracts.
Really? That's interesting, I didn't know that.
Oh, there's, there's many, I mean, these are getting run out of Florida, they're.
Why, because of the monetary, or just people just don't like?
Because they've turned into a predatory system. People hear red light camera, and I think the image they perceive in their mind is solid red light and, and a car speeding through a red light, that's a very small percentage of the tickets. These are for a tire on a white line, or a rolling right on red, and, and that's not right, and, and we've heard from the police department that they will not go that route. But, I do worry that there's a set of financial incentives put in place for the city that we could, we could find ourselves down the wrong path with these.
What's our budget gap in the city? I mean, you know.
You know, there's, there's a structural gap of about $15 million in the city.
That's a lot.
Out of a budget of 176 million.
Sure, so you're talking about, you know, 8%, 9%.
Yeah, okay.
And, and the other problem that you may have as well going forward would be, we don't have a waste management plan go forward. So, in 2020, by city projections, and it could be 2019, and maybe we'll perform, it could be 2021, but in the next, say, four to six years, this region will have a waste management crisis before it, and, you know, how that's necessarily solved, right? We all produce about five pounds of garbage a day, and, and how do we, how do we deal with that? You know, there's a lot of folks that say, well, you have to reduce more, reuse more, and recycle more, and hopefully, we can get there, but while we still have a municipal landfill, is the time to really test out our human infrastructure here. Can we more effectively reduce, reuse, recycle, minimize our waste stream, increase diversion, and really, I would say, prep ourselves for a financial shock at the municipal budgetary level? So, that will be a challenge as well, which will add to that number. So there has to be some reconciliation there between revenue, expenditures, debt, and we'll try to get there. We haven't really been successful so far this term with that, but hopeful we will.
Close the $15 million budget gap.
Well, you know, people, people have to be engaged, and the public will have to be engaged.
How much of the, of the mayor's budget gets tweaked? Is it around the edges with what she proposes to what you dispose of? Is it really like one, like in the state budget, it's only like 1% or 2% from what the governor proposes that comes back and is finally adopted?
Historically, it's very minimal in the city. That's frustrating for me, because when you have 15 people that are democratically elected from very small neighborhoods across the city, these are small districts, well, they're not too small, but.
Well, they're small, yeah, okay, they're not.
At a smaller level, you have. At a smaller level, you have um people elected and. You know, I think there should be a more um active role there for. The policymakers and and the elected officials to reconcile how we allocate our resources amongst public safety, infrastructure. We talked about recreation earlier, um how do you, how how do you um take and. Spread your resources the most effectively, I I wish the council was a bit more active in that area, but historically, the institution has not been. Very, very proactive there.
I think we're out of time, but you know, welcome.
Thank you both.
Becca, you know, we're gonna have to ask you again, because we always want to keep our hand on the pulse of Albany.
I'd love to, I'm right on the road.
And you're our man, and continue the good work that you're doing for the people of Albany and the Albany County, and do it with good health.
And good much success.
Mark, thank you.